We are going to call to order our regular session meeting for tonight, February 11th, 2025. We will roll call in. Ben?
Ben Hershey here.
Eric?
Eric Gaya here.
Megan?
Megan Harvey here.
Laura Scott present. We may be joined by a few more of our members as the evening progresses, but just so the public is aware, this constitutes a quorum. So we're going to move forward and get through. We'll start with announcements.
Which is me, correspondence. So I have no real correspondence to report, but I did get emails from many of the parents, caregivers, from the students who were here last meeting, including Jackie and Diane. And those might have been the only two via email, but I spoke to more of them when I saw them around town. And just really lovely notes from the parents about how proud they are of their children. And I was able to express to the parents how amazed we are at them and let them know that we will have an update later about playground stuff.
What, do you want to speak really? Yeah, why don't you do that now? Because we don't have anything dedicated. Because we have been getting a lot of interest. And this is in regards to the playgrounds at Mountain View, particularly on the elementary side, and the lack of accessible ADA equipment. And so Megan has really taken.
I'm so excited. I'm so excited. These kids were amazing. They came, they had prepared statements. Some of their parents sent their prepared statements. So I could see like what they had planned in advance. And so I immediately reached out and asked if I could come observe a recess. So I went on Friday. I think I went to the third grade recess. And the fourth graders got to come down. Or maybe I went to a fourth grade recess. Either way, I got to see everybody. And they got to like walk around and show me the whole situation. And like, it was really wonderful. There's a very clear need. And so we have moved forward with, I guess, announced tonight officially that we'll have an ad hoc committee.
Yep, we've decided that's how we're going to progress with this. We're going to form an ad hoc committee. That gives us the opportunity to invite stakeholders from the community, parents, teachers, any other sort of experts. And I'm reaching out to Bert, who is one of our architects for the school building. But he unfortunately was not involved in the exterior design. But he has done a lot of that work in the past. So we'd love to pick his brain. And we are looking to create a design. And we are going to call for quotes. We've already identified funding streams. Ideally, in a perfect world, if everything fits with this, then we want to see it up and running by August or September of this year. That is our goal. And we will certainly keep the public updated. And we'll be sending letters home to let everybody know about the joy of the ad hoc committee. Do you have a date for your first meeting?
Yes, so I just heard back about room reservations. So these agendas are not posted yet. But we'll do a meeting on Monday, March 17th, at 5:30, right here in the conference room behind me. And that will be a chance. And of course, the students and their caregivers and any of their peers who want to come, we would love to hear from you again then. And that will be sort of a first planning session. And then we'll have a follow-up on the 31st, Monday, the 31st, also at 5:30. And then a month later, Monday, April 28th, at 5:30. And those three are planned. And we're hoping that that will allow us to move through some yet to be determined requests for proposals. Official things that we have to ask questions about. The mayor's not in, I don't know what all the business is, but.
We're also going to, yeah, we have to look into the process for RFPs to send things out to bid. But really, what we're focused on initially is the design. Everything else can move quickly, but we really need to identify design because that can take a bunch of time. And nothing else can proceed till that happens. And so in that vein, we're also going to work on a survey, we think, to try to sell to all families. And then also just maybe share, if you don't necessarily have kids in the district, but we could share that widely. We're going to gather as much info as possible.
I think that would be in advance of the first meeting. So we just have some ideas to start talking about. And the other thing that we're going to discuss at that first meeting is a stopgap idea for, you know, there's a, I think, one cornhole set. And it's in a shed kind of like across the yard, which if they're short on supervision, it's like really hard to go be able to get that for like a 20-minute recess. So what kind of a situation, like a locked box, like one of those pool bins or something? Just something we can do for a stopgap for.
The rest is clear.
The rest is clear. So.
Great.
Last question's on that as well. I'm so excited.
Just a comment.
Yes.
Mention. So just around the design, there is, depending on how much that is or not, there's a section, chapter 149 for, 146 for design work. So if you can check in with the procurement officer, Mike Owens, you know, just to look at how the design's going to happen. Bert is extremely familiar with that, too.
Right, right. I'm really hoping to lean on Bert's guidance.
Of course, we'll facilitate, you know, a quick posting for design RFP as we get it together. Right, and so that's a great point there. So to clarify for the public, we want to hear from the community what they want to absolutely see before just blindly submitting and asking firms to send a design. We want to make sure that they're meeting our needs, not vice versa. So that's the idea of that whole plan. So I will try to get that survey over by the end of the week so we can send it over. Oh, next week is vacation. So we look for the survey after the vacation.
Yeah, it'll come.
Okay. That was correspondence. Do we have any gifts?
I don't have any gifts to announce.
Okay. Well, okay, great. No. And student representative, we heard from our student rep at our last meeting. Generally, the students have very busy schedules. So she's able to join us typically once a month. And I expect we'll see her again in March. Do we have any work yet on Mountain View, student rep?
No. Oh, we said we wanted to continue to do that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Maybe we should just call Piper and see how she's doing.
Oh. She's a freshman, how she's assigned. Yes, she's doing such a great job, right?
Okay, so we'll work on that, too, for the second half of the year. Public comments. If anyone is joining us remotely or here in person that would like to share their thoughts, we ask that you keep it to three minutes and just identify yourself before you begin to speak. We'll leave the floor open for about a minute just to check and see if anybody is interested in participating tonight. Da-ding, da-ding. Seeing none. We are going to close public speak and move on to our superintendent update.
Good, I think I'll do the virtual one. I see some two. Well, first, we have two guests tonight, which are very happy are here. First, we have Julia Sorry-Franks. Julia has extensive experience in budgeting and business services. She worked in West Springfield, Springfield, and most recently, Quabin. So we were lucky that Julia was able to join us this year as, you know, a great business manager. Moved on to another district. And we're in the middle of budget season. And it's so key that we have her here. So I'm going to introduce her to all of you. She starts tomorrow, which I'm so excited about. She already came, got her office all set up. So we're back in business, starting tomorrow. And I just would like Julia to say a few words about herself right there at the microphone.
No pressure, Julia. In a gorgeous peacock blazer.
This is my 20th year in education. I'm excited. I started my year, my education career as a classroom teacher, was a department chair, a team leader. So I know a lot about school operations. And I try to keep what I know in my base of students and teaching at the forefront of decisions that I make and what we do to make sure that our students get what they need and that our staffs are supported. So I'm really excited to come here and join your community. And I'm excited to work with all of you.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. So excited.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I ask, Julia, what did you, when you were a classroom teacher, what did you teach?
High school social studies.
Are you okay?
Okay, she's excited. You'll talk later.
It was actually my experience with the We the People program in high school.
Yes, full body chills, Julia. Welcome home.
Right, that led me to be a poly sci major in college. And so it's full circle because I've heard that you guys have a fabulous We the People program. And I'm really excited about that.
We want to do that at the middle school level as well. We're working on it. We're working on it. Excellent, so exciting. Frosting, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Maureen.
And we're very excited again. All of you probably remember from the interviews for a superintendent that we're very lucky, Michelle Malch here. Michelle has over 30-year career in education. She spent her career in the Springfield school system. I actually had some communication with Michelle and the team there during COVID. We were all trying to decide what to do. And she had documents. And so the team there would meet. When Dan retired, it was Michelle that took over as the interim there for a little while. So, you know, we're excited that she's here.
By unanimous request of their school committee, as so I'm told.
That's right. So we're very excited. Michelle will start here, June 1st. The two of us will work together for a couple of weeks. And then she'll be on her own starting on July 1st. Everybody's excited that she is coming here. And we are already collaborating, sending documents back and forth and having conversation weekly, a couple of times a week sometimes. So that she's all set to come here when it's time for her to come. Meanwhile, she has a big job to finish up in Springfield. Many positions that she does there. And they're going to have to hire many people to be able to do all the work that she did, for sure. So I think it's great also. Michelle has four children, just two that are still in school. So she understands education. And every day, she's dealing with kids in school. So it's important to have that parent, you know, aspect of what's happening in schools, too. So Michelle, I don't know if you'd like to say a few words? We're very excited.
Good evening, Chair Scott, members of the school committee, colleagues, community members, students. I'm honored to be selected as the next superintendent for East Hampton Public Schools. Thank you so much. I wanted to express my gratitude for putting your trust and partnership in me as we work together to ensure the success of every student. It was such an incredible process. I appreciate everyone who took the time to be part of the selection process, those who wrote letters, who came to school committee to speak. It was just so incredible to see everyone coming together and their engagement in the process. And especially to the students who offered up their insight and experiences in schools to help really, help me make my decision that this is the right fit for me. And, you know, just them showing all that they know and how powerful their voice is. It was just such an incredible opportunity. Our schools are really the heart of the community. And I want you to know that I'm committed to not only academic excellence, but equity and inclusion in our schools, making sure that every student feels seen, heard, and are really truly motivated to be successful and to thrive, not only in our classrooms, but outside of our classrooms. Because our job doesn't end when they graduate. We want to make sure that they have everything that they need to choose whatever their amazing future is going to be. A big thank you to Superintendent Benenda, who has been connecting with me, reaching out. I really appreciate it. You're taking the time to make sure I have what I need to enter this space. And you're a wealth of knowledge. Congratulations to Julia Sorry-Franks as the new businessman, Director of Business Services. Congratulations. And to all of you, I am so honored and humbled to be standing here. I cannot wait to start in June. I am really looking forward to an amazing experience here.
Incredible. Thank you, both of you.
Thank you.
Really incredible, inspiring women and leaders, both of you. And we're so thrilled and fortunate. I, we, what is it? We compromise now. Never mind.
We're so thrilled.
My Nima is channeling.
We're really thrilled to have you both joining us. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, yeah.
Perfect. Okay, so every year, there's something called the enrollment restrictions that come from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Virtual School. So there are two virtual schools, right, in the Commonwealth. One is called the Greater Commonwealth Virtual School. And that's K to 12. And there's 1,200 students that enroll in that. There's a limit to the number of students that can enroll. All right, and then there's the Tech Connection Academy, which is known as TECA. And that's also Commonwealth Virtual School. So there is a rule that every year, district has to decide whether they wanted to make a rule that no more than 1% of their students can enroll in the virtual school. So we met with the leadership team and, you know, discussed about enrollment because that money does go with the students to the virtual school. It's a school choice. And about trying to keep our enrollment up here. So the administrators all agreed to give the school committee their opinion that we should just vote for a 1% cap on that. And that's pretty much what districts usually do. They decide on a 1% cap so that you don't lose a lot of students. We don't go over the 1% cap, but you never know. And so because of a tight budget year, I think it's a great idea that we stick with the 1% cap on that.
And so with our school population, that's roughly 14 students a year?
Yes.
Anybody have questions before we entertain a motion? Sam has a question. Sam, I probably have one after.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
What was my question? My, so if we kept this at 1%, and you said that was about 14 students, if there is like a 15th student or, you know, if there are a couple of other students who want to participate for whatever reason, is it the kind of thing that we can go back and retroactively change in certain circumstances? Or is it something that we have to set once?
It's something that, oh, through the chair. It's something that we have to stick with, is the 1%.
I think, Sam, I think it's similar to like choice in slots. Like you set them at the beginning of the year.
It's exactly the same here.
Yes.
Any other questions? Yes, Megan. Yes, and this is just for high schoolers. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, how many do we have?
Well, actually, no, it's K to 1, it's K to 8. No, wait a minute. It's K, it's not high school, it's K to 12.
Okay, K to 12. And do you know how many we have each year?
Last time we looked, we had six.
Okay. Do you know why, like, some of the reasons why students choose that? Like, do we have information about what direction?
We have some anecdotes. It's a bit of a homeschooling alternative.
Yeah, so they have to, like, you know, for example, there are certain, it used to be that they stayed at home and did it. But now there are days they have to also report to the center. Like, I think there's one in Greenfield, right? That's where they have to report to. So during COVID, there were, for example, students that had school phobia. They found out that they do much, they do much better in having this type of setting. So some, all school districts were allowed to set up virtual schools if they wanted to. However, districts a lot didn't because you have to provide teachers. It's a very expensive option to do this. So the state ended up with just, right, two schools. And some kids just prefer to do the work online. They don't want to do, it's not a homeschooling application. It's actually going to a public school. So that's, that's the choice that they make. It could be, there could have been, I know in my past, there've been students that maybe felt like they were bullied at school. And so they wanted to have another option than homeschooling. There's a teacher, you know, that you meet with here, a virtual teacher. You do a lot of work on your own, but there is a virtual teacher.
Any other questions?
Sam.
Sam.
I'm so sorry. If, so we only have about, you said about somewhere around six students using it now. I'm like concerned about that cap. If somebody were to move into the district and their children were enrolled in the virtual school and they wanted to stick with that, would that affect our number? Or would we still have to stay within 1%?
I believe that they would be allowed to stay because they got, as of March 1st, it's where you are, March 1st. So I would assume, I don't know, but I would assume you'd be able to stay in that area because you transferred in. I would assume you'd be able to stay.
And it wouldn't even be our district paying for that unless it's after March.
That is right. Usually after April, it's the same thing with the school choice.
Right, before. You're sending district pays the choice tuition.
If you move in. But after that following, after you were here for the next vote, the next year, you would then have to be picked up by this district. Right, if after the year goes by and you are still in school and you want to stay there, we would then have to pick that up. You don't always have to stay with the sending district.
Right.
Is this a one-year?
It's a one-year. You do it every year. You have to do it by March 1st.
We've done this before. I have no recollection of ever having voted for this. Huh, where have I been?
Just doing a lot of stuff is what you're doing.
Anyone else have questions?
Did we really vote on this last year?
Every year.
It's okay. Anybody else have questions? It's okay.
I'm too busy with the eels.
Love those eels.
They're coming way too big for their tank.
They are?
Yes.
Okay, listen, we're not, we have the eels right now. Get it?
Tell you about the eels later.
Can I entertain a motion to approve a 1% cap per student population on an annual basis for enrollment in virtual school?
I make a motion for a 1% cap.
You're so moved.
So moved.
Excellent. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm going to do it.
Sam, are you opposed?
No, I said aye for a favor.
Okay, thank you. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Anything else under the superintendent update? Or does that wrap things up for you? Okay, we're going to move on to the business update. Will that be you again, Maureen? Or do we have, or do we?
We don't have a finance or personal update.
Right, so we don't have, right. Again, these are something that we typically see once a month. I would expect that we would probably have those prepared for our next regular meeting, March 11th. Okay, so moving beyond the business update to school committee discussion, policy subcommittee update, Sam?
We haven't met. We were supposed to meet this upcoming Thursday, but I have just had a personal thing come up. So I'm going to be reaching out to the committee and picking another date.
Okay. A personal thing noted. Okay, so keep us posted on that. And finance subcommittee update, Megan?
Okay, so I have just heard back with confirmation for a room booking for all four of these dates. But after this meeting, I'm going to run them by our Director of Business Services and make sure they match up over there. So these agendas are also not posted. But tentatively, we have a meeting on Tuesday, February 25th, Friday, February 28th. I'm sorry for making a Friday meeting. There was truly no other rooms available ever. Tuesday, March 4th, and Tuesday, nope, that's, yeah, March 4th, my goodness. And Tuesday, March 11th. But I'll run those by.
So Monday, the 24th is off the table because there were no rooms available?
Correct. No, Monday, the 20, yes.
Monday, the 24th is not available.
Is that February 24th? I think it was Tuesday, the 25th.
Oh, boy.
Hold on a second.
I think it's Tuesday.
It's the 20, I think I texted you wrong. It's the 24th that was the problem.
Okay. So the 25th, the 28th, March 4th, March 11th, tentatively.
That was way better said than I said it. Yeah, those are the ones.
And we will confirm. And as soon as we get confirmation, those will be posted. So you will be able to find them in the Agenda Center. And Megan, you did schedule all those for a televised room.
Those are all televised.
So those, you can follow along from home, join via Google meets, which Megan took great pains to do last year as well, which we found really helpful. There is a small but really dedicated group of parents who like to follow the budget process. And we really want to honor their commitment to it and not have them drag themselves out in February to sit here in person.
You can watch them later, too, and just feel the fun.
Nothing more fun.
Yeah.
Okay, great. CES update, Sam?
Yeah, so I've got a bit of an update for CES. So we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago now. And just so that everybody's aware, CES stands for the Collaborative for Educational Services. In our state, when you have a small district that maybe can't provide all of the services that are needed, particularly special education services, a lot of times they will come together and form collaboratives with other districts. So our, the collaborative that we are a member of is the Center for Educational Services in North Hampton. And there's 36 other schools, or 35 other school districts that are also members. So each school district sends a school committee member to be on the board, and that makes up the board of the organization. So it's a, like, very, very large board of school committee members. The CES finances this year are, so there's been a massive revenue deficit of about $2 million, although it's kind of looking, you know, depending on how they finagle things, it could be, it could end up being more this year. The collaborative provides a lot of other services other than just the services that we collaborate with them on. So they also provide a whole lot of professional development. And of course, like, you know, with ESTER going away, professional development opportunities are being funded less frequently by other districts. They also compete for grants, state grants in particular. And there was just a new, some new legislation that kind of prioritizes vendors with smaller budgets to get those grants. So there were a number of grants that usually CES was getting every year that they're no longer able to get anymore. And then the other problem is that there's been a reduction in the allowable administrative and direct rate on DESI grants from 8% to 2.7%. from 8% to 2.7%. So that's the amount of money that's paid, kind of for every dollar that DESI pays them for these grants. They get eight, they get eight cents to go towards their backend stuff, their administrative HR benefits, things like that for their employees. These were all kind of things, I mean, we've all been talking about Esther going away. These are like not new challenges. These are all things that we had been talking about at CES, and so it was, I was a little bit surprised, to be honest, and I think I was not the only one who was a little bit surprised to see kind of the, there was reporting in the Gazette a few weeks ago. They had some, they actually ended up closing their licensure program and moving either, some staff had been laid off, some staff had been moved or moved down to part-time. So I'm pretty concerned, to be honest, just kind of about the fiscal picture going forward. So at the meeting that we had, the executive director, Todd Gazda, came and kind of went through kind of what's happened over the past year and kind of what they're working on at the collaborative to address it. There was a lot of really good public speak from employees at the collaborative as well, which was really nice, because, you know, we don't usually hear from them. So it was kind of good to hear from their perspective, too. And I sent you guys all of the documents that, that we've been given, and I guess, I have a, I have set up a time to talk with Julianne Levin, because one of the things that came up...
Sam, can you just, so people know who Julianne is?
Julianne is the director of curriculum, and so she also, kind of, a lot of the questions that I have about our relationships with the collaborative, Julianne will be able to answer, and then also, like, she has a lot more of the historical information that can kind of help us, help me sort of see, kind of what the best, the best way for me to represent East Hampton in this, I guess, is what I'm saying. It's an odd position to be, like, on the board of a nonprofit, but like, I'm elected by the people of East Hampton to represent East Hampton on that nonprofit, so it's like a, kind of an odd, weird position to be in. I, you know, I, I am, I would like to just get a good handle on, like, what we work with the collaborative on, and if, you know, we might be, I mean, there's a lot of changes right now that are happening, not just because of Esther going away, that's definitely part of it, just though the landscape of education financing and funding has really changed. And it might, this might be a time when we kind of sit down and look at, like, what we're getting from the collaborative, what we're getting from Lower Pioneer Valley Education Collaborative, where some of our other students receive services, and, and, and we're providing in districts. And kind of, I would like to just kind of get a better handle on that, so I'm a little more prepared for these conversations, because I honestly, sometimes when I'm there, I don't necessarily know how this, how what we're talking about necessarily affects East Hampton, and a lot of what they, what we talk about is their DESI grants that don't actually have anything to do with our district, or their, you know, their DYS contracts, which don't have anything to do with our district. So it's just kind of an odd position for me to be in, and I'm just trying to kind of find a way to better represent East Hampton. So I wanted to give you guys a chance to see this, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you guys when I get, like, agendas, and they write a really good report every time we have a meeting, the next meeting's in March. So I'm gonna make sure to send, to start sending that to you guys, you know, so you can kind of follow along with that as well. But, you know, I wanted to know if anybody had any questions or suggestions, or like, you know, if there's anything that you want me to bring back. I'm, I am very concerned about what, what the next few years are gonna look like. I wanna make sure I know what I'm doing.
So to kind of buttonhole this for the public, succinct is not Sam's middle name. Sam is extremely thorough, and we appreciate that.
Sorry.
But, no, 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 that's great. But I just wanna make sure that people are picking up what you're putting down. So our, there's a lot of concern around the financial viability around a lot of this educational funding and the resources that we were getting some of our services from. So when Sam is saying they're gonna go have a meeting with Julianne Levin, that's kind of step one of probably 10 steps to, A, identify what's our district getting from the collaborative currently, and that allows us to start the brainstorming process of, okay, if the collaborative gets hit by a truck, figuratively, what are the other resources we can identify to replace those services, and what would that cost us, and what would it be? And maybe there is a more feasible alternative elsewhere, or maybe there is just some additional support we can lend to the collaborative. But Sam and I have spoken at length about this. We both agree that that proactive approach seems most appropriate at this point, and we look forward to dragging.
The, and one thing, Charles, we lost the program.
Say again.
We, we lost a program that was funded by the collaborative that was actually, like, very popular in East Hampton. There was a childcare program, and after, the after-school program that was funded by one of the 21st Century Grants, and we actually had a parent reach out to us saying that she'd really like to apply for that grant. Again, I don't, it's hard to tell kind of what a status of any of that is gonna be, which is one of the things that I wanna go over with Julianne, just to make sure that, like, when we're talking to the public about, like, what happened to this after-school program that everybody likes that we clearly need in East Hampton, I wanna make sure that we, like, have the actual information, because people do wanna help. We've had people from the community say that they wanna help. I wanna figure out what it is that, that would be the most helpful.
Maureen has, Maureen has some thoughts on that. Go ahead.
I'll throw the chair. Yeah, I actually met with them, the people that were in charge of the 21st Century program on that.
Is this, can we clarify which program? Is this Marcia's program?
Yeah.
It was one that was at the high school for after.
Tiny Tux?
For after.
No, 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 no. No, it's not Tiny Tux. It's not Tiny Tux.
No, 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 it was the one that was at the high school for makeup during the summer for the kids that need to get credit recovery. Is that the program?
No, that's...
No, this is Marcia Levy's after-school program.
It was Marcia Levy's after-school program.
That was originally at Maple School for years and years and years. Yeah.
But did it, is that the particular grant the collaborative had that went to the high school?
Yeah.
And that was paid for under Century 21. Is that the same grant?
Don't know.
Because that was...
I, I don't know. This is one of the things I wanna clarify.
Yeah, because that grant, that particular grant went because the state wanted it to focus in on elementary and middle school kids. So there's a new grant that we're supposed to be working on for next year if those funds stay
Okay.
in, in that account to be eligible. If there's any funds available to apply for.
So I think that the takeaway from this is we don't have the answers yet. A lot of this is rapidly changing, especially when state and federal funding come into play, if the grants are originating there. I think we just want the public to know we are aware, and we're really actively chasing down as much information as possible, so that the experience of our students and our staff day to day is impacted as little as possible. I have a question.
I'm also driving...
One second, Sam. Go ahead, Megan.
Sam, I have a question that I don't expect you to know the answer to now, but a question that maybe you could ask them. So this, and the key factors that are contributing to the deficit and the, the changes to the indirects, was that a change that was made for last year, and does that vary year to year? So again, this is a question I'm not expecting you to necessarily know, but like, is that indirect really variable, or is it like...
My understanding is that that indirect is not variable, and that this was a surprise. But I will look into that more.
Yeah, that's like...
That was one of the, we had to. Yeah, it's a huge...
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I mean, and, and I, I just know, like, from my, my work experience in, in, you know, kind of funding and getting money from the state, sometimes things change in a really big, kind of unexpected way like that. But that was not, we did not, you know, when we were looking at the budget for last year, that was not something that, that was expected. Now, I don't know if it wasn't expected because we weren't looking at the right thing, or because, you know, or if it was just like something that, that, you know, DESI was doing to try to make something else balance. So, yeah, I don't know, but I'll look into it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm much more concerned if that's something that we, they knew was variable, and they weren't sort of prepared to deal with it, but if they went from a sudden 8 to under 3, I mean, that explains the entire situation. That's a huge...
It's a huge, it's huge.
And also, they've been, year over year, they've had to get tighter and tighter and tighter, and that just pushed them.
Yeah. So if that's, if it's a one-time, really sudden drop, I mean, I'm curious to hear the answers to all these questions, but I would expect to hear, like, how they're gonna adjust, and then sort of a new model moving forward. But, yeah, so I'm curious about what you can find out about, like, how that indirect might bounce around, if it ever does.
Interested in finding out, like, is this something that, like, we can put some pressure on legislators to deal with? You know what I mean? Like, is there something that we can put in the school committee to support the work of collaboratives in general? Because this is something, this is something that, this is unique to our, well, it's not unique to our state, but our state is one of the states that does it this way, and, you know, we've decided to do it this way, and I feel like it should be, should be viable. The whole point was that it was supposed to save us money on services that are really expensive and specialized and hard to find in small districts. And if it's, if it's, we're at the point where those services also aren't vulnerable to be, when done by the collaboratives, you know, that's problematic, so.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Yeah, of course.
So, the first one, I already forgot. I don't have a pen. So around requests for funding, and it was in the, the paper, there's a new coalition that's looking for different ways to fund or help education funding. Chapter 70 always is a conversation, da-da-da-da-da. But there is a movement that I think has a lot of, makes good sense, is one, truly 100% funding for Circuit Breaker, as well as...
What an amazing idea.
A Circuit Breaker program that also covers special education transportation. I just think about the fluidity of our school budget and most school budgets. That money shifting and it being variable truly, whether whoever wants to say it, they're wrong when they say it doesn't affect Chapter 90, and this is not special ed versus regular ed versus da-da-da-da-da. But the reality is, you can say, oh, great, you get $106 per kid, but of that 106, it'd be great to break it down and find out how much went to last-minute transportation or unexpected out-of-district cost. Ultimately, love to see some fair share money go into a separate account line item that is parceled out based on geography and IEP that will offset some of the costs for those residential and clinical placements.
But also something that doesn't incentivize, let's say hypothetically, an organization like VanPul that runs essentially a monopoly of business in the Commonwealth. So I don't think we should be forced to pay whatever it is.
Yeah.
Some, if, if you're the only provider of a service in the state,
Sure.
you shouldn't be able to set a price that then can explode. I think we were paying 42% more this year for VanPul than we were the year prior.
No, I, I agree. I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that the internal inspector general takes a good look at that. It's been mentioned by a lot of, a lot of mayors. The other thing I had, oh, collaborative. You know, different collaboratives are organized different ways. They incorporate and whatnot. I think that the collaborative that we belong to, it's mostly Hampshire County, really was specialized in some very specific services. I remember the CAT Center, the services that we need. I, I would be curious to see if there are services that will be discontinued in the shrinkage of our collaborative, if there's an opportunity to pair for direct services or direct programming within the, our school district and the collaborative, so kind of working with them. I mean, there's a little bit of funding left that goes directly to collaboratives. It's not a lot. Western Mass collaboratives tend to really fight hard for that. But is there an opportunity for us to, to assume a little part of their budget, and they bring the employees to us, and we can figure out some way to, to increase, you know, the tier-two interventions and programmings when we've got a big hole in? But I'm, you know, I'm thinking about the CAT Center, when they're working with technology for kids who are non-verbal or, or stuff like that. What are they doing that we can, you know, assume into our district, even if it's a little bit? I mean, it's hard to get an SLP. It's hard to get an SLP with their Cs. It's hard to get an SLP with their Cs, and being, looking at that alternative virtual communication. So maybe there's, there's a partnership or help there.
Like a pseudo-regionalization, which is everything everybody's talking about. Sam, HEC and Mount Tom Academy, is that through CES?
Yes, so those are two, those are two, like, out-of-district placements, essentially. And CES is, most collaboratives are run more like this. This is more of their programming. But CES is essentially like the school placement, or, and, and so Mount Tom, and, Mount Tom is a little bit different because not, those kids don't all have IEPs.
Yeah.
But for, for HEC Academy, that's like a, a placement for students who have special education needs and they can't be served in our in-district programs. They need a smaller, kind of more therapeutic space, or more individualization. It's very community-based and very individualized.
Those, to me, are the hardest to replicate, right?
Well, I mean, I, I would just entertain with our incoming superintendent here, and Bissin Fander. You know, I think that there are a couple of interesting models, some that have worked out very poorly, but, that we have room in our high school.
Yeah.
And, and to support the programming that is being cut by, not quality, but by money, is there, is there some way for us to grow internal programs based on the situation with the collaborative? And, you know, I, I don't know what...
We take the life skills program and we just...
Hmm.
Interesting.
Well, and, and, you know, we also have, we also, I'm so sorry, my animals are fighting behind me. That was the voice. We also have, we have students placed in other places, too. You know, like, we, we also have students placed with the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. We're just not, we're not members there. We don't, and we don't get a discount essentially as members. So, you know, that's the other question I have, is just like, this was set up to kind of, you know, as members, you kind of pay in for a membership, and then the services don't, don't cost as much. I don't necessarily know how, I've looked, I remember when we looked at the membership rates and the fees last year, it didn't really look to be, I mean, it wasn't a huge savings. So, so, yeah, I'm curious about kind of getting into all of that as well.
Okay. All right.
My goal is to try to go to at least, like, one of the collaborative finance committee meetings, but they're at, like, 7:30 in the morning on Mondays, I think, and I gotta get my kid on the van, so it's a little tricky.
That explains, that explains all of their problems right there. That's, that's perfect.
I, I was gonna sign up to do finance, and then, and then they're like, oh, yeah, we meet at, you know, 7:30, 7:30 or 8:30 or something, like, every other Monday, and I was, oh, well, that is not, that's not gonna work base. But I would like, I'd like to jump in at least once, so.
Thank you, Sam. Yes.
One quick thing. I didn't write it down, Mayor, you said that there's a group that's currently doing advocacy for the Circuit Breaker funding and the special ed transportation.
Yeah.
That could be something we could do, like, parent advocacy around, like, that could be something to channel.
You know who's really talented? It's that gent we had speaking to us a couple of weeks ago.
Is there already a group?
Yeah, there is. It was in the paper today, their name, and who, a lot of it had to do with...
Mass Promise to Invest?
That's it.
Yeah, okay.
I just think that the, the approach to, to really look at that transportation piece and out-of-district and, and Circuit Breaker truly 100%.
We fix it, or we all go broke.
Right, and, and Chapter 70 was gonna take forever to, I mean, who really understands Chapter 70?
Yeah, let's connect. That's great. You do? Okay. Show off. You do, okay, yeah. Well, that's, that's great. I feel way better about the whole situation.
I hope one person in the room understands Chapter 70.
I raised my hand. I raised my hand.
Julia did, so we're good.
It was painful, but I understood. Okay, moving on to action items.
Okay. Oh, that's me again. Okay, hold on, we catch up. Okay. Motion to approve the school payroll dated 1/23/2025, the amount of $630,487.23.
Okay, second?
Second.
Was that Ben? Thank you, Ben. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I think it's just delayed.
Yeah, that's an aye.
It's a delay.
Okay, so you're gonna, to be clear, let's save right now, because we're about to do a bunch of these. You're gonna say aye if you're in favor. You're gonna say nay if you're opposed. Okay? Thank you so much, Sam.
Beautiful.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you, Eric. Motion carries. Go ahead.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 1/23/2025 in the amount of $436,715.3.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you second?
Ben seconded. Sorry, I was so focused on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're muted now, Sam.
He already said aye.
He did?
He said aye.
Okay. Thank you.
It looked like...
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you, Eric. Go ahead, Megan.
Motion to approve the school payroll dated 2/6/2025 in the amount of $628,210.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you, Eric. Motion carries.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 2/6/2025 in the amount of $740,229.60.
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you, Eric. Motion carries.
Motion to approve the minutes of the January 7th, 2025 finance subcommittee meeting.
A second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Motion to approve the minutes of the January 14th, 2025 regular session meeting.
Second. Thank you, Ben. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Motion to approve the minutes of the January 17th, 2025 special meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Motion to approve the minutes of the January 28th, 2025 regular session meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Ben. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Motion to approve the 2025, 2026 school calendar draft number three.
Oh, that's, that's on hold.
Four. Okay, withdrawn.
Withdrawn. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve the request to declare the old dishwasher Champion Industries model DHTVC70 from 2012 as surplus. Is there any discussion we need to have?
We need a second, sir.
Sorry.
I just need to think for one more second. Okay, second.
Do we need background? Does there anything we need to know about this?
This is the new GU that I was talking about. So this is the one we've replaced, because we have that extra lunch money, money that we can't spend on anything else. We can't use it to pay teachers.
So this is just a vote to put the old one away?
Out to best.
Yeah, due to its, the evaluation or, or the value of it currently, if it's over a certain amount, like, 50 bucks or 500 bucks, it has to be declared surplus.
Did the same thing with the Pep and Building, that hell.
Thank you, that.
It wasn't arbitrary.
Okay. In that case, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Do I take that to mean the new GU has been installed?
It's installed.
Excellent.
And working.
Great. Okay, our next meeting dates, we will be back, back here again, hopefully a little bit rested and with protein in our systems on March 11th, and...
And so many other ones, too. I mean, these will be coming. We'll post.
There's gonna be a lot of...
Done to centers.
Yeah, a lot of meetings. The March 25th meeting will not only be a, a public, a regular public meeting, but it will also be the public hearing on our proposed FY26 budget. My concern about that, Megan, is looking at your dates, that's not in line.
It is, so the, the...
Oh, 3/25.
Yeah.
Okay, it's great. That's perfect.
We just can't go beyond, this is our last...
Can't go beyond the last.
Yeah, so, just to clarify, what we're talking about, we have set up four meetings. Hopefully, we get this done.
For the finance.
For the finance subcommittee to meet up the budget. Hopefully, get seven in three meetings. We have a fourth meeting just before our regular session on the March 11th, and it will get voted out of subcommittee.
Yep.
So we have a lot of work to do between now and then, which we will do, and we will stay tuned. You'll all hear lots about it.
Okay. And then, March 25th will be the public hearing on our FY26 proposed budget. Okay, executive session. We will be moving into executive session. We'll be journeying from that. So we will be about to say goodnight to all of you in the public. Executive session pursuant to Mass General Law C30A-S21A to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and contract negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant, pursuant to MGL C30A-S21A to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the EEA Teachers Association and Support Unit, because we have an Emily. Okay, so